This is the party.
Yes, thank you.
But mom, it's just so late, it's not at a point where.
Hi, I'm Barbie.
Good.
Good, good, good. Yeah, you know, I thought I'd get all fancy.
Okay, it's July 12th, July 12th. It's green. It's green, but it's not on. I'll use this other mic. Testing. July, is this one on?
Hello? Yeah, they're not working. Hello?
Test, test, one, two, three, test. Yeah, it's really low, though. The volume's low.
Testing. Okay, here we go. July 12th, 2023, Planning Commission meeting will call us to order. There are four items on the agenda. I am Daniel Gonzalez. I'm Chair, I'm Vice Chairman and will be chairing this meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Knudsen.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, justic, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with a roll call. We'll start with our newest Commissioner, Barbie DeSoto. Just state your name and then if you have any conflicts with any of the items on the agenda tonight.
My name is Barbie DeSoto and I do not have any conflicts with the items on the agenda.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Raleen Wallin, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Okay, we'll begin with item number one. Barry Finch requests ordinance text amendments to section fourteen point zero eight zero two zero and fourteen point zero nine point zero two zero to add meeting halls for rent as a new conditional use in the A1 and RA zones, as well as new conditions in section fourteen point three four point two five zero. Citywide application. Mr. Ardmore from staff will be presenting.
New technology. We good? Hello? Okay. Thank you, Commission. So we are back here after last hearing in June that we heard this item. So I just wanted to kind of give you some updates that happened since. And so the item was continued from June for time for the applicant and staff to get together and work on some kind of standard conditions for the proposed conditional use in the A1 zone. So we did that. You have that in your staff report. You have those proposed conditions. Since the staff report was written and sent out, there are three updates that I wanted to go over with you. They're there on the screen. First, as you read in, the request included to amend permitted uses in RA zone. That has now been, is that showing on your screens?
My screen seems to be password locked for council member.
Sorry.
I, oh, I'm looking off my, my colleagues' screens. I'll be fine. Thanks.
Okay, so the applicants have actually put in an application to rezone the piece of property that this use would be going on from RA to A1 zone. So they feel that that's no longer needed in the text amendment. So moving forward, that fourteen oh nine oh two oh won't be part of the proposed amendments. Okay? The second update was if you look at the proposed conditions on page eight of your staff report, the top one, condition, proposed condition number two, talking about the noise. We've added a reference there to say as per chapter nine point zero six Propensity Code to, to kind of refer to the existing noise ordinance standards that we have in the city. And then the third, we did receive in between last hearing and this hearing, some public comments. Those, I believe, were forwarded to you and those should be in your emails or in your packets as well. So those are a few updates that I just wanted to go over since that report was sent out. Okay. All right. So just, we went over a lot of this last time. So I'm just going to try to be brief with the background on this request. The subject property, the applicant's own property here at Three Ten South, twenty four seventy west. And like I said, they're trying to add a meeting hall for rent as a new conditional use allowed in agricultural zones. As part of that now, in addition to adding that as a conditional use, proposed conditions for that use, standard, standardized conditions in fourteen thirty four two five zero. Now, as we're talking about the, the subject property, I want to kind of give you some context for that. There's questions on the subject property last time around, so I wanted to go by. Can you click on that again, Sandy? Thank you. Went around the property. I don't know how many of you had a chance to visit. This is, the first picture is, is along twenty four seventy west, looking at the front, the, one of the, the three homes there that they own. The next is going, once you've rounded the corner on Two Eighty South, the, the entrance to the agricultural property. There's another view of the entrance, kind of further into the agricultural part of the property and then looking west from the intersection down that, that gravel road. Just to give you some context for, for the property that we're, we're looking at. Now to get to the amendments proposed. This is the same as last time. Meeting halls for rent being added to conditional uses in A1 zone. And this is what's new. Hopefully you've had a chance to read over these. Staff thought it was important to, to have these conditions as written to mitigate any concerns that the public, the planning commission and/or staff has had with this, with this item. I can go over any of these in detail if you have questions before I move forward. Go ahead. No, go ahead if you have a question about one of these.
Let's start with number one. Where it says, "One off-street parking space shall be provided for each four occupants." Now, what do you mean by four occupants? What do you mean by occupants?
So for.
That's people who are invited to the party.
Four, four people.
So if you invite two hundred people, you need fifty parking spaces.
That's correct.
Is that enough?
That's a, that's kind of a standard that we, we have out other places in the code. For example, dance halls use that same standard and that's.
But it's, it's different in the fact that a lot of maybe the stuff that they are going to do, people are going to come and they're going to stay. They're not going to come like to a reception where they come, stay five minutes and they leave. And so the space becomes open again. People are going to come and they're going to spend the two or three hours that it takes. So is that enough parking? That's my question. I don't think it is.
And I think, yeah, I think that's a question for the commission, the council in the end, but these are the proposed conditions, I should say.
Okay. Down on number three, it says, "A minimum of two security personnel shall be invited to manage when they wrote up their proposal on last time." They indicated that they were going to need one parking attendant. One or two security people, actually two, because you need to have a man and a woman. They're going to check the restrooms. You need a host or a hostess. You're going to need a licensed bartender. So according to me, you need five people.
Well, so it's the way Steph saw it.
Were you just talking about security people?
We're just talking about security people.
Okay.
And one of them can serve at the entrance, one of them can serve in the parking lot. I mean, that's, that's kind of how it's managed, but we thought a minimum of two would be reasonable.
On number four, it says, "The design of the meeting hall building shall be characteristic." Characteristic meaning only a barn?
Characteristic of agricultural use. There could be more language added to that to, to talk about materials allowed and disallowed materials. There's, there's room there, I, I believe. We talked about going down that road, but just kind of kept it simple for, for this, this meeting, this proposal.
On number five, it says, "The meeting hall and associated parking shall not occupy more than forty nine percent of the property." So you could put a barn and fifty parking stalls on an acre. So that means that the size of the farm would could be two point one acres.
Right.
It'd still be right under this.
Right.
Is that what you want? Okay. Down here on the bottom, it says on number seven, it says, "There shall be a single point of access which will be monitored by security personnel. So only invited guests are permitted to enter. Once onsite parking is full, no additional patrons will be allowed to enter." Where are they going to go park? They're going to go park in the road. So does that make sense? That you're going to shut it down at seven o'clock and not let anybody in? So they have to all go out and park on the road?
I, it's okay.
So they wouldn't be able to enter the venue. If they parked on the road and tried to walk in, they wouldn't be able to enter the venue.
Who would stop them?
The security person at the entrance.
They've got an invitation to come? I don't quite understand.
Rephrase your question.
Well, it just seems like this is once the site parking is full, no additional patrons will be allowed to enter. There's always somebody that's late.
I think.
So they're going to have to park out on the road?
I think I understand what you're saying. So the occupancy will be held to what they can park, right? So, so once you've reached that limit, nobody else can enter. And that's, that comes down to following the conditions or having the conditional use permit revoked. That's, that's why these are here.
Okay. It's the spill over parking we're very sensitive to. That's what we're trying to find a way to be able to define and then revoke the permit if it's not adhered to.
Okay.
Okay. As far as your, you just made the question about two point one acres and is that really what we want? Again, just to be very clear, staff doesn't want this at all. Staff thinks this is a bad idea. Okay? We're trying to put into some type of code what we thought that the direction the planning commission sent us.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, just to clarify the parking, I mean, that'll be based on the size of the building, correct? Like the.
It'll be based on the size of the building and the occupancy will also be limited by building a fire code. So, yeah. Okay, now, I'm looking at these, these are, these are proposed text amendments, right? And it's, it's easy to narrow down on, on the subject property, on what the applicant owns. But I thought we made, we missed a little bit of context last time. So I thought it'd be helpful to pull up these three maps. All of this bright green in the city. So from left to right, you have north part of the city, the southeast part of the city and the west part of the city. This is all the A1 zone in Provo. You could see the little there, the little red box right there. That is the subject property, right? But that's just a very small percentage of the city that this amendment would be opening this use up to. And I thought that, that helps give a little bit of context and perspective.
Do you know about how many acres that is there?
Overall, through the whole city, I don't. I don't have that number. I could get it for you, but I don't have that with me. And then lastly, as Bill alluded to, staff's still recommending against this. We, we don't feel meets the general plan. We don't feel that it meets the intent and the purpose of the agricultural zone itself with the zoning code. I, I hope we've made that clear in our staff report. But, but that's all I have prepared unless there are additional questions for me. Okay, thank you.
I do have a question. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just say more about why you feel like it's not in line with the general plan? Because are you saying specifically the, the, the goals of the general plan for the agricultural areas? Is that what you're referring to when you said that?
Yeah, and also more general goals in the general plan. I've tried to pull out a few here that, that kind of are directly related. The, the point of agricultural property is farming agricultural uses. Commercial uses belong in another place. That's staff's opinion. I think that was written into the purpose and objectives of the A1 zone. And that's what we're making our, our recommendation off of.
Can you go back to the map?
Yes.
Point to me where that facility is, the sport court facility?
The, the what?
There's the sport facility, sport court facility. Isn't it around that area?
Oh, you're the, the upcoming regional park. Yes. Thank you.
I thought it was already built. Sorry.
It's right there. So in that, in that area, that's not green. Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question too?
Yeah.
What is the benefit to somebody who owns agricultural land in AZ, an AG zone? What is the benefit that they get for that zoning? Is there any sort of benefit, tax benefit or anything?
I, I don't know about taxing benefit. I, I know about permitted uses. So, so they're able to have every kind of agricultural farming permitted use on that land where other properties in the city cannot get it.
But there's no other financial benefit?
There might, there may be, Bill.
Robert, you want to talk about the agricultural tax exemption?
Well, there is a green bill. The color of green belt. And if you own five acres without a home or five and a quarter acres, if you have a home on they call it green belt and through the state, you can get a reduction in your taxes. So that's the only benefit that I know.
But it has to be five acres? And how much does, do they own? How many acres? Ten? Okay.
Bill, I have a question for you. What happens when the land doesn't become useful for agricultural use, when you, you just can't see a use for it? You know, when there's no other options, what do you do?
Well, what has been happening, what has happened historically is the property owner puts it up for sale. The general plan calls for this area to be residential. So the, whoever puts it under contract to buy it comes in and asks for a zone change to residential.
Is that usually granted? Is that?
If it's following the general plan and this area would, all of the green above Lakeview Parkway is all master plan, general plan for residential or for airport industrial. As long as they're asking for one of those things that the general plan calls for, then the staff recommendation is supportive of that because they're following the general plan.
Thanks.
I think Barbara has a question.
Yeah, I have a question about what is north of there along that street. I imagine people will be coming off the freeway or across town, possibly on Center Street, coming down that street. What is north of that property and on that street?
So right there, north of it is a school. So that's a elementary school right there. And then a church to the north of that and to the east is a bunch of single family detached houses. And to the south.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand earlier, if you like, your first slide in your presentation where you kind of gave an update of what happened to be now in the last. Could you go to that real fast?
Yeah.
My mic seems like crazy muted.
Can you click on that phone? Sorry.
Sorry. Thanks for doing that. Okay. So can you just expand on the first bullet point?
Yeah. So, so in your notice language, you, you received three proposed amendments.
Yep.
The second one is being taken off the proposal because they are trying to rezone the piece that the, the, the new barn would go on to, rezone that from RA to A1. So that no longer, they would no longer need the RA zone to be amended to allow the use because it's all A1.
Got it. So. If the rezone goes through, and we're not considering that at all, right?
No, not at all.
That's not as funny a factor.
Came in on Monday.
Got it.
Yeah.
And so these, I just want to make sure I'm following, these proposed text amendments are still to RA or are they now to A1?
Just to A1 and then the fourteen thirty four two fifty.
Got it. Okay.
So two out of the three that are noticed.
Previously, we were talking about amending RA. It, it's on. It's just really weak. It's a weak sauce one. Okay, that's hello? Hello? That's not, okay, there we go. That's way better.
Okay.
Wow. Sorry. Yeah. So previously, were we talking about?
We were talking about only A1.
A1. Okay. So that hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed. It did change for a time in between last hearing and this hearing because part of, they noticed part of the property is RA zone. So both would have to be
Got it.
amended, but they did went with the zone change instead.
Got it. I'm with you.
Okay, thank you. Good clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. We'll go ahead and turn the time over to the applicant. I understand you have a presentation. I just want to remind you, we, we are familiar with the project. We've, but I understand you have a new presentation.
We do.
So.
What we, what we've tried to do is address the concerns that you guys brought up. We're talking about some farm that's in our imaginations. So let us show it to you.
So we'll, you're going to have fifteen minutes, just like last time.
That's fine.
We do have a new feature at the podium. It's going to create a sound that clicks. And then your microphone will turn off at fifteen minutes.
That's fine.
Also, I, I do want to acknowledge, we do have a new planning commission member. I, I believe she's read all the reports. We also did.
He's new too, I think.
Receive the.
New to me. You weren't here last, yeah.
We also have received public comment from, I'm addressing this now, Matt Knudsen, Aaron Smith, Sean Miller from the Agricultural Commission, Janay and Edward, and Janay and Edward Lewis. But with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to you and, and hear what you have to say.
In regards to staff, we respectfully disagree that this could not be appropriate for agricultural zone. So. And the, you, this committee also agreed last time that they felt this could work in agricultural zone. So we have requested a tax amendment to allow us to build an event barn on our property with property tax doubling the last two years and with the cost of living going up every year. We needed, we need additional ways to create income on our property. Our desire is to preserve agriculture. We do not want to sell to a developer or order, in order to keep our property in agriculture, we need our property to generate additional income. Our property is not a. Our property is not a ranch like you see on TV. It is a working ranch full of animals who eat, live and make messes. I want to give you a tour of our ranch. I would ask you to use your imagination, you can all use your imagination, and see the potential of this property. This is the, this is the entry to our, to our yard. We plan to paint these posts black and to have an iron sign across the top. We'll secure the entry with a gate. This is the first barn on the north side of our yard. It's the one that Mr. Knudsen suggested was built in the eighteen hundreds. This barn structure is sound and secure. It is not going to fall down. Has been part of the farm for about seventy years and does need some beautification. It is part of our, as part of our venue, we plan to do many beautification projects in the yard. This is a row of stalls. The top fronts lift up to allow horses to put their heads out. Again, these barns are safe structures. These barns are full of animals as you see here. Just south of those barns are two metal buildings that were built just a few years ago. They may not be bright red. They are sound and have a sure foundation. Inside, they are neat and clean. The first metal building will get a large barn door. We plan to house our petting zoo and animals here and have a fun place for animal experiences. This is the manure pile. There were some concerns last time about the smell. The wind is right. There could be issues of smell, but that's why they're at our place on the farm. Uh, where there are animals, there will be manure. On our property, we recycle this manure by mixing the manure with woodchips, grass, sand and dirt to make compost and topsoil. Our property has five acres of outbuildings, four acres of pasture and one acre of compost. We have options for boarding horses in a barn or we offer pa- offer pasture spaces. There are some open areas to work with the horses. Our ranch has a variety of animals. It's a place for our tenants to gather together with their families and friends to enjoy their animals. It is a retreat from the city. Our tenants care for their animals getting here early in the mornings and again at night. This is a place their kids can learn to work and care for animals. We have utilized every space of our property to fill the demand for tenants. This is the hay barn that was enclosed to provide spaces for more animals. This is the center of our outbuildings. There was a fire several years ago destroying the buildings in this area. As we have rebuilt, we have ensured the structures are sound and safety is a priority. This is where we will landscape behind the event barn. This barn silo will be removed and will become a parking lot for our event barn. This is the side of that silo and again, it will be removed and a parking area will be here. This is an aerial view of our property. Again, I want you to use your imagination. We have many fun ideas for this property. We want to incorporate animals in our landscaping with some goats, lambs, maybe a mini Highland cow. And we want to have grass, sorry, grass and outdoor gazebo with options for events to be outside. I want a water feature with ducks. Barry isn't sure about the ducks, but um we'll see where our imagination takes us. This is the front of our yard. These buildings will be removed. Our barn will sit at the front part of our property. This will be a beautiful space where families and friends can come together to celebrate their special events with a farm atmosphere with options to have hands-on animal experiences. This will make our events unique. We will have options for animals to celebrate with our guests. Many beautiful opportunities for photos, a place to remember, experience is not offered in any other venues in Provo. We feel that this will be a great, they feel this will be great for the community and this barn will have a farm feel that is functional and beautiful. Where we'll be proud to host any type of event. This is the barn we're looking at building. So it'll look like on the inside. And it's a, a place where we can feel proud to have any type of event. So please help us make our property a place where dreams can be made.
Job. The surrounding area, it's been fine for years and years where we were just hosting animals, but now looks is more important. So we are committed to do that. A failure to do that would make our business fail. So. We did have a, a challenge from you guys to go back and work with the staff to put in some mitigation items that would, or conditional uses that would help uh alleviate risk for the city. We tried to work with the staff on that, but they didn't want to talk to us much on it. We met with them and they, uh, we had concern just on one issue. Um, and that is the security. Um, the way they want to write it is a minimum of two security personnel shall be on site to manage the entrance of vehicles and parking lot during any event. Security personnel must be certified and provided by a licensed and bonded security company. So our concern was any event. Uh, might include bringing my Sunday school class over to use the barn. It might be an activity days group. It could be an equestrian goo- group coming for a day event at the farm. It could be a, um, a family reunion, a fiftieth anniversary. It could be an elementary school tour or any other thing that's on that list. So the word any to me seems to be a little bit loose because I don't think they really meant that. I don't think they mean ev- everything has to have security.
Then if they meant that and they said, yes, we like it's the way it's written when we presented that there might be times where two security guards are not appropriate.
They, they told us that they didn't want this anyway. And so they were not going to change the verbiage on it. So they told us to bring it to you with verbiage that we would su- suggest if we wanted to eliminate uh more delays. So we have done that. We also, by the way, talked to uh various security firms today. And we asked them if the previous list was an appropriate list for proposed security necessary events. In other words, would these, would these kinds of things require you to be present? And they were laughing at that. So what we're saying is for any of the following conditions, security would be required. We realize that this goes citywide. So let's put in some conditions that would trigger security rather than just saying any event. Events that provide alcohol, events that go past ten PM, events with live music. As we talked to the security firms, they thought those were great um conditions for um, the necessitating security guards. Um, once there are security is required, there'll be one security per person per one hundred guests. Security person will have a Utah State security license. And so we feel like that's a, a much cleaner and much more precise definition of why or when security would need to be triggered. Rather than just saying any event, because I don't, I don't really think that that's what they meant. Um, as far as um parking concerns were brought up again today. We have ample posi- ample room to far exceed the parking that is the minimum. So the, I agree with you that fifty parking spots would not be enough. But we have more space than that. So there'll be more parking than that. Again, our license will be revoked if we don't keep these rules. So I keep feeling like sometimes it's like, oh, was he trying to pull a fast one? We're not trying to pull a fast one. We've been as open as we can possibly be. We're gonna park. Unlike other businesses like this, we're gonna park our people on our property. Now, if we have people showing up with a ticket and we don't have a parking place, that's on us. That's our problem. And that's gonna lead to the demise of our business, turning people away. Can you imagine from a wedding? So we have to deal with those things. We understand that. There's a lot to this business. It's not just an easy fix. We're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to have our stuff together. Uh, and we're trying to be as open and honest with the city as we can. They continue to say from the staff's point of view that this does not meet the requirements or the flavor or savor of the long-term plan or the zoning um conditions or the goals of this zone. I think it completely does. My option as a farm owner that is not generating enough money is right now, one, sell it. Sell it like all the other farms are gonna do or most of them. That's my option. I can't pass it to my children. They already have careers. They don't, they can't make enough money to do it anyway. By doing this and opening it up to agritourism items, which again, we talked last week, the, the local agricultural college promotes this agritourism. They're teaching it in their college. They're promoting it and saying it's a great thing. The US Department of Agriculture listed article after article after article. I brought you three or four. There's tons of them that are researching this and how can we better do this? Because this seems to be the, the complicated thing is how it was a farmer, a lifelong farmer pass a farm that's a generational farm to his kids. What causes problems? They got six kids and one of them gets the farm. How does that work? Oh, he's supposed to buy out the other five. Well, how does he do that? It's a million, millions of dollars. So they end, so they end up selling it. So this is a great way that these, these departments of agriculture are promoting and saying, this is a great way to keep agricultural land agricultural. And so we, we just completely disagree that this is not agriculture. This is, people are gonna come to this place as opposed to others because of the animals that are there and the farm field and the provide, the things that we can provide that Judy showed you. So did you have anything else?
Um, there was a little concern about traffic on that road on twenty-five thirty. I don't think we have enough people, you know, our event, people, the amount of people coming to the event would not be as many who are going to church. And so traffic is gonna be less than a Sunday morning or a Sunday afternoon, way less than school when school lets out. So I think that that road can handle that traffic if there was concern about traffic.
It's a collector road as well. It's designed to, to do that.
Oh.
Sorry, it's a, it's a collector road.
We have a minute and thirty seconds left to spare.
What should we do? Jokes? Anybody got jokes?
Who votes for the duck pond?
You were able to get through all your slides?
Yes.
We did.
Okay.
Judy Finch?
Barry Finch. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, we'll uh we'll move to any comment from the district. If there's a district representative or a neighborhood representative, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Uh, I believe the limit is two minutes. Uh, please state your name, where you live. And uh, we welcome any comment.
Hello, my name is Catherine Blumberg and I live about two and a half blocks away from the proposed property. Um, when I moved to Provo, we decided to move here about two and a half years ago or a little over. We were looking at that neighborhood and I was so excited to move because, and the place we were gonna move into as renters, right across the street, I had seen when we had come visiting, I had seen a field of horses and I was so excited to be in a place with that. When we came down to look at the house right before we moved, that horse field had been taken away and it was being developed into houses. I love the fact that there will still be places in and among neighborhoods that still feel like you can touch and connect with nature. I lived in Sweden. I have lived in England and it is very common to have interspersed with your cities and your developments, places like this, places where you can connect to nature. And I love the idea of bringing some of that to Provo. I think they have well thought out things and that it's going to be a good idea. I agree, it's not gonna be worse than the neighborhood school. Wait, I've seen that road backed up really bad for school. I drive out a different way anytime it's the school release times. So, um, I, I vote and would love it if you guys would really consider keeping nature in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see, I don't know, half the audience is staff, half is any family members or other neighbors. Please, if you, if you feel you need to step up and say something again, this is the time.
Elizabeth Weeks, I live around the corner. Um, the area Catherine referenced that used to have horses was right behind me and now it has seventeen houses and the city put those in. I'm also in favor of keeping some agricultural in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Again, just reiterating, we did receive several public letters. I, I mentioned the names earlier. Um, if anyone else doesn't have anything, we'll, we'll go ahead and close public comment. All right, then this is, turn the time over to our commissioners. Um, we can discuss debate, um, deliberate on this, uh, yes, one more.
Just a quick point of clarification so no one gets confused. One of the items on here is events that provide alcohol. The way the state law is structured, nobody can have an off-premise liquor license or beer license in Utah County. So it's been a concern that we've had at other venues who want to have a con, uh, there was a group recently that wanted to have a big outdoor country festival and wanted to be able to serve alcohol but can't because the county laws don't allow it. It's not just Provo. So I don't want anybody to be confused. That's not an option here or anywhere that doesn't have a liquor license established with a business related to it. So.
Thank you. All right, I'll, I'll go, I'll, I'll open up maybe this will loosen the conversation. Um, I'm, I'm glad that I think it was Ms. One Bird and uh, Ms. Weeks woke up. Um, I remember having my kids, they're like two and three years old and, and being in Ivans, Utah, and we, I used to take them to the park. And right, right adjacent to the park was uh agricultural use. And they had horses and, and other animals there. And that was kind of like my, my kid's first chance. Uh, so whenever we'd visit St. George, they would go and take a carrot to the horns or something like that. Um, I do, uh, I do like the, I believe that this use um helps preserve continued agricultural use. Um, I'm comfortable with uh no greater than the forty-nine percent uh for the, the conditional use. I, I also share concerns with uh, with traffic and, and noise um and security. Um, I do think maybe secure, I, I don't know what the right number is for security. I, I, I like the three conditions of, that they proposed of uh, security being mandatory with alcohol, live music. Um, and past ten o'clock. I think any one, single one of those should trigger the need for security. As as far as the number of people, I, I think this would be one we, if you're inclined to to recommend approval of this, I think the number of people is something we should discuss a little more. Um, I don't know if two security personnel would always be required. I agree with Mr. Finch on that. I don't know if, um, the trigger or the, the threshold is one hundred though. So I think, I think we should kind of debate that and discuss that. And i- if, if you're one, a, a member that feels inclined to recommending approval. Um, yeah, I, I was just making the comments. Um, yeah, I'd love to hear from the rest of you guys.
I have a couple of thoughts, especially considering weddings and.
Especially considering weddings and things of that nature. I've had four weddings in the last five years and I don't think I've ever, for, for my own daughters, I've never exceeded two hundred people and it's usually an open house, come and go type of situation. So I don't think the parking is as big of an issue as some might think. People don't always stay for other events, possibly, fall reunions. I don't know, but I just feel like that's not as big of an issue. I appreciate the city wanting to protect agricultural zones, but I also feel that property owners should not have to sell their property that's been in the family for years and years. It's a generational property and they shouldn't have to sell to build residential housing. I feel like that's, I mean, I'm a longtime Provo resident and I would feel really sad if another longtime Provo resident had to sell to a, a builder and have more homes in that part of town. It's gonna happen. It's inevitable. So I, I feel very strongly that um they shouldn't have to sell if that's an option. It shouldn't be the option that they're forced to, to have to, to do. So those are just a few of my thoughts.
I'm also inclined to agree that I think it adds a lot to having a mix of environments and not just tract homes, I guess. I am curious though, the point that, I'm sorry, in the gray shirt, what's his name? What's your name? Rob brought up earlier about how um maybe on a smaller property, this would overwhelm the farm part of it. And I don't know how feasible, if this, we're thinking not just for their, their situation, but across the board. I wonder if forty-nine percent is a lot for, I don't know what's an average size farm or if that's a ten acres is average or, you know, I'm just thinking if the purpose is to preserve the agricultural land and we give half of it to a, an event and parking, then it really is not serving the agricultural preservation. So I wonder what could be maybe a little bit, I don't know, like thirty-five percent of the property or something a little more modest. I don't know. Generally speaking.
One thought I have is I, I don't like making changes state or citywide to zoning. I just think there's way too many situations that come up that um could be problematic that we can't foresee. So I prefer to make individual decisions and choices for people that bring them versus blanket citywide changes to zoning. That's just my thought process. So if there's a way to have an applicant come and show that it would be beneficial, that it would help them, that they meet all the requirements for a conditional use, is there a way to carve out a zone specific for that? Or could they even rezone part of their property to be able to fit that use?
Like before, I couldn't hear me at all, now it's really up. So yeah, I was thinking along that, those lines and I think the only zones that would allow this type of feature in the current just gonna use this mic. Would be uh DT one, DT two, and then CM. And so then I think about what, what these property owners are trying to do with their property, which I feel is a very reasonable thing to do. I'll make some comments on that in a second. They'd have to request a rezon into DT one, DT two, or CM, which is clearly not at all aligned with the general plan or what you would want in that area of town. So I really don't think they have um another good option here. I also want to point out though that like this isn't a carte blanche a per- permitted use for this zone. It's under the conditional use. So it, for each single, it's just, it does have citywide application, but it would be on a case by case basis. I think they would have to get the conditional use permit granted through a planning commission. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong there, but that's my understanding. And then as far as just my other thought that I wanted to share on, on what they're trying to do with their property, I, I think I read a lot of the city, all, all the letters and uh you know, there was, there was some feedback around, you know, the, the property not being well kept and maybe some of the structures being dangerous. And um, you know, I don't, I don't know these wonderful applicants personally. So obviously I don't understand all that, but I do understand how kind of like incentives work and you know, um, my guess is they're running a pretty low margin business, housing animal stables, and they probably don't have enough working capital to make the improvements they needed. And so if you want to, you know, the best way to, to make that property better is to uh put a big, big investment in a nice barn and then that uh for a business that generates working capital to improve the rest of the facilities and also create an incentive for them to actually make the facilities that way to justify the uh, the return on the investment in their barn. So I, I feel like it's a good project. I feel like it'll actually meet the needs from a lot of the community letters that they're asking. Um, assuming they go through the rest of the process of getting the conditional, conditional use, getting the building permit, class, you know, there's a lot of steps that was still need to go that I think will help quality control this. And I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez, this feels to me like, I just, I just respectfully see it differently than staff. Um, I, I'm looking at the general plan here and it says, the goal of the general plan is to uh preserve uh conserve agricultural lands and I, and I just, the reality of the market forces are that if you can't make these, these um lands more revenue bearing, they're not going to be preserved. They're gonna get sold and then be rezoned out of agriculture. So it's, it's, it's consistent with what I've experienced in Arizona and I grew up in a farming community in Chandler and in Gilbert where it just, you know, just throughout my entire life, I saw all the ag land turned into tract homes. And the places that were able to survive are ones that found additional businesses. And so for me, I feel like it is the way to go.
My challenge, I think, is similar to Commissioner Kendall's and that's uh, while I think there's some really interesting things with the applicant's idea from an entrepreneurial standpoint, I can see some bleed over with accomplishment of some of the, potentially some of the um objectives of the general plan, but I think there's also been some convincing arguments from staff about misalignment with the plan. And more, more importantly, if we're going to make a, a sweeping change that goes potentially against, it depends on how you look at it, against or for the general plan and do that for the entire city. I think we need to have uh more insight, more input, and I think we need to have more uh support from staff for something like this to, to move forward. I appreciate this as a test case to evaluate, but uh, making a widespread application like this, and, and I can appreciate uh what Commissioner Whitlock said about maybe some multiple stage cases. This doesn't, you know, guarantee this for, for this property or another, but it does open the door and I think that's something that we should take pretty carefully.
Can, can staff correct me on this, but once something like this is changed, if somebody meets the requirements, you can't deny it. That's, that's part of the problem.
So yeah, you make an interesting point about conditional uses. The idea that people have in their mind is, oh, the city can still say no. A conditional use permit is very, very difficult to say no to. Um, just by the way the laws work. It's, it's pretty much a permitted use um with standardized conditions, right? The only way you can deny it if there's some type of adverse impact that's gonna help affect the general health, safety, or welfare of the public, that you can't find a condition to mitigate. And that's, that's very rarely the case. So once it's a conditional use, you treat it as a permitted use.
But, but they need to meet their conditions. So you, you write the conditions in a way where you would feel comfortable
That's the idea.
With the application.
Yep.
Yeah. So there's like a high level kind of dis, I think there's just a different, I mean, some people in the commission versus staff on this fundamentally are what they're trying to do aligned with the agriculture zone.
I see that.
Right? Isn't that basically what comes down to? And then, and then, so where you fall on that question, then it's now, okay, we're going to allow this. What conditions we allows, would we add to this to make it more tolerable essentially?
Can, can I ask one more question? Is it possible to create a subset of an agricultural zone that would allow a conditional use like this? So that people could rezone a certain parcel?
It's possible, yes. Yeah, it's possible that an applicant could come forward with a, a whole new zone language. Yeah.
And you would give up your tax benefit from that parcel then, right?
I don't know. It, it depends how that zone was written.
On that point though, I think, so I know we, I believe we talked about this briefly last meeting, but there's the applicant's desire to say agriculture is more beyond just the tax. It's also because the animals would not be permitted in other.
Right, there's, there's, there's uses, there's rights that they have attached to the property that they want to keep. Um, so going away from an agricultural zone as we have in the books, there's not a, a medium zone in between agricultural and commercial, right?
Like, is there any, the, the, the business concept that they have, you know, put before us, a place where I can go to an event where there's animals, horses, petting zoo? Can that be accomplished in any zone in the city today?
So agricultural zone in, in Provo City already permits a number of those uses. You know, petting zoos, agriculture-related activities.
Pumpkin patches, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, event centers isn't one of those. Uh, we don't have a zone that would have.
The central business concept, right? It's, those are, those are adornments to the central business concept of the event. So I'm saying like their business concept that they're trying to do is that, could you do that in any zone in any way in the city today?
Uh, an event center with animals?
Like, let's say they did go rezone at CM or DT one and they, they couldn't do it, right?
Most likely not. You could probably pull like some kind of temporary special use permit to have animals on a, on a site that doesn't allow agriculture uses.
What I hear Ms. Kendall suggesting is an agricultural zone that would allow this.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Is, is it okay to ask staff how they feel about that? Is that okay to ask? How do you feel about that concept?
Haven't considered it. Um, it'd be something to, to come back and, and report on, how to, you know, meet as staff and, and talk about it.
Cause I'm just, I'm just riffing off what she was saying is like, I mean, I, I think there are people in this, in this commission that feel like this, there should be a place in the city for these things to exist. Is there a way for us to do it without amending all of the A-one zone?
Yes, the advantage would be that uh this doesn't open the conditional use door to all the agriculture zone in the city as you saw in those maps. The um process is simply having then write a new zone, an agricultural zone that would accomplish this. And then the applicant would have to go through a zone change process on this piece of property. Yes, that could be done.
Could you write in such, cause I know we just had the previous meeting a while back around the, like the a, the agriculture um it was like basically, it was, so there's all these protections under the ag zone around like, you know, protecting your property rights. People can't complain about your animal smells and stuff like that. Could we write it in such a way where those are all inherited by the sub-ag zone?
Well, that was the agriculture protection ordinance. That's a separate thing from this. They would have to apply to have that apply. They would have to come in as an applicant to have that applied to their property. Are you talking about trying to wrap that into this new zone?
Uh, well, my understanding is in order to get that, to, to get that, those benefits, you have to be part of the, the agriculture zones. Is that not accurate?
That's correct. You need at least ten acres, which they have.
Okay, 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 got it.
I think part of the problem or disparity we're having here between the staff's position and what you're thinking is we think that this preserves agricultural zoning. It doesn't preserve agricultural use. This is a commercial use.
Yeah.
I, I think that's where we're having a disagreement.
And when you're saying agriculture use, you're specifically saying farming and selling agriculture products or, or?
Or any of those other uses that we allow in the agricultural zone now, like petting zoos and pumpkin patches and corn mazes and
Yeah.
Those kinds of things, right?
Um, I, I'm gonna bring up just because uh Mr. South wasn't here. Mr. Soto wasn't here. Uh, when we discussed this at the last hearing, um, I brought up the, the concept of other cities. And like Orem, Linden, Pleasant Grove that have um, I don't, maybe you've seen them nurseries. Uh, I know there's one on Geneva Road and nurseries that have wedding reception centers. I, I think part of the motivation for them doing that is due to the seasonality of the business and the use of a nursery. It's, it's kind of limited, so they look for additional revenue streams. I think one really huge key differentiation between some of those places, oh, and there's another one in, in like a North County Boulevard, Pleasant Grove towards Cedar Hills. There's another one, but I'll, just to let the Finches know, there's one key difference in some of these other ones is that they're those, while they're, they're agricultural uses, they're um with, with a commercial element, they're, they happen to be on main thoroughfares. And, and my impression is that staff is, just by reading the report, they're concerned about uh vehicular traffic and mostly residential uh noise and lights complaints and need for city services. And I, I'm sensitive to that and I think I think your property is a little bit more of an island. While, while it's near a collector, it's not on the same um, you know, scale of some of those thoroughfares that some of those other nurseries that have reception places are. Um, you know, on the same hand, I think it's less traffic than the adjacent school across the street. Or, or the church. Another block over. So uh, so I don't, this is the part where you, I, I very respectfully disagree with staff about, I don't quite have the same concerns with vehicular traffic, um, noise and light complaints. Those, those parking lots for the church and the elementary school are lit, you know, that night throughout the whole year. That's required. Anyways, those are just some things I, I wanted to bring up to the two of you that, that the rest of the commissioners heard at the last uh hearing where the Finches uh had their presentation.
But um, the, those examples you just mentioned, none of them are in Provo and they couldn't exist in Provo as currently the law, the code currently is constituted, right?
And that's where, this is where I, I
Yeah.
I depart and disagree with uh planning staff, development staff that I, I do you know, I disagree with them. I do think it is a way that we preserve uh agricultural elements within, within the community. Cause the alternative is uh, it's kind of like all or nothing. Either we you know, it'll
Either it's economically viable farm or it gets sold and be developed. And then, and the economically viable farms are becoming harder and harder to do.
Right, right.
Um, I think that anytime you make a citywide change to zoning, it deserves all options to be looked at and careful consideration. So while we don't like to postpone things more, I would make a proposal, I'd like to make a proposal that we postpone this. And we let staff consider creating a subset agricultural zone that would allow this use for people, especially on the border of their property where, you know, it, it borders other uses. So it's not the middle of their land, which breaks up their ability to use it as regular agriculture. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and I don't mind that proposal, but I, I do have to say what, what we have before us, it requires a, a yes or a no, and not so much a continuation because uh it would require a new application.
Could, could you not continue it to allow the city to consider that with the applicant and then come back with revisions?
So you, you're, you're both thinking correctly. Uh, we could continue it indefinitely to give staff a time to submit an application, a new application for new ordinance uh for new zone. Uh, that would obviously take some time. So I would, I would tend to ask the applicant if they're comfortable continuing it for an extended period of time or if they'd rather move forward and, and have a, have a decision from city council. Um, but that's something we could look into if that is the decision of the time commission.
Sir Finch, are, I, I mean, I, I don't know if we quite have a consensus on, among planning commissioners. Um, I, you don't necessarily need a, a unanimous uh decision.
Well, it only takes, it only takes four of us. Seems like the next um city councils where they're gonna vote, they can rehash this again and will. Um, seems like this was like, we're either gonna do it or not. The homework that you gave them, they did. You're suggesting, you're suggesting that we go back and work with them. They won't work with us. They told us they don't want this and they wouldn't even consider the word any to take that out, which I'm, I know that they didn't want that word, but they, so it's, it's not been the most fruitful time we're trying to work with them. I say we vote uh and pass it up the line to the city council and, and, and let's go. I mean, I and, and let's go. I mean, I, our business plan is in place and one of the conditions that we have to consider is to try to hit a wedding season of next year. You know, I don't want to be building it the following winter or something like that. And so, you know, delays, 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 and, and yet there's no, there's no communication that goes.
So your, your preferences were up and down, yes, no vote, and this does, uh, this is an advisory, a recommendation that goes towards, uh, city council. They'll have an ultimate say. Um, I do share the same concern about, um, citywide application. I, it's not my preference either.
Which means, you know, that affects the vote.
I do, it does. It does. And I, uh, they'll kind of live by the vote or die by the vote. But it also, I think it also, um, if we are gonna tweak any conditions, we should voice that now. If there's conditions you'd like to see.
Uh, if I could just share a thought, one thing I really like about like ten ethos of the work we've been doing over the last several months, I feel like we've really tried to solve problems together. Like, I remember the, the El Fuego Fridays and, you know, so I guess I would just ask, and I don't want to put the staff on the spot here, but like, is there any way that we could allow a business like this to proceed in a, in a, in a manner that staff feels comfortable? And maybe the answer is no or, or not, but that would, that would be maybe a data point that'd be helpful as we think about how to move forward. Like, cause I, I don't want to say, let's go, you know, go throw a zone out there and then they spend all the time and then there's, you know, there's still not, still not really what staff feels comfortable with. I don't feel like that'd be a fair ask.
One of the challenges here though is there, the request is to make meeting halls for rent a new conditional use in these agricultural zones. And we've been told the story about, you know, petting zoos and animals and how that connects with nature. But what, we're also looking at this from the entire city's point of view. And what happens when the money isn't made with petting zoos, it would be better to have another facility or an ancillary facility that meets this. And all of a sudden that part's gone. Do we want to have meeting halls? Forget the animals, just do we want meeting halls scattered out in agricultural zones anywhere in the city? Do we want that to be an option? And I don't think that's the intent of the general plan. So whether we uh, are trying to solve a problem in this specific instance, and the vision is nice, and, and there's a lot of neat and fun things about it. Having meeting halls in agricultural zones doesn't seem to fit. And to use this as a test case to just throw it out there citywide, doesn't seem prudent.
But I, I, and this was part of the discussion last time when you were here is like, I think meeting halls are not all created equal. And that's why we talked about, we had a discussion and they had the line around of agricultural character. They're essentially event spaces with an agricultural, uh, vibe environment. And which is a very common business, uh, pattern that we've seen, we've seen other. I was just at Wadley Farms recently and I drove past Walker Farms in Linden and, you know, it's a very common business pattern. Um, like I said, I, I went to my sister's wedding at one of these places down in Arizona. Big, nice, beautiful red barn and an agricultural environment. They had a little buggy. They were taking people up and down the walk. It was in Chandler, I believe. So I, I think it's a, it's a development pattern as a way for, you know, agriculture spaces to make money that is viable, that is proven out in many other places that should be allowed to exist in Provo from a, you know, from many angles, property rights, trying to preserve the spaces. Like, um, the com, the public comment we had, like, that's my personal belief. And I'd like to just find a way to make that happen in a place, in a way, in a manner that is appropriate and, you know, staff is comfortable with.
I just wanted to add, I, someone's going to do it eventually in that area. Someone's going to have an event center down there in an agricultural area. So someone's gonna be a first for somebody. Well, it's, it's gonna happen down there. Everything's happening. We're seeing that area grow. So someone's gonna have one in five years. It will be somebody else wanting to maybe have one. So.
And, and for those reasons and the reasons that Commissioner, uh, Whitlock brought up, I, I could get behind it personally. But I think we gotta have a comprehensive plan that staff feels good about because they're gonna be the ones that have to manage that. It's not gonna be us. So just say, yeah, go for it and then just kind of see what happens. Feels a little fast and loose to me.
The way I kind of look at it is like, planning staff is, I hate characterizing planning staff. I, but, um, but they're, they're looking at preserving, you know, A1 RA as a, a very strict, I don't even know if I want to say strict, but a, a very, um, orthodox, uh, definition of agricultural use. And, and there's reasons for that and that they've articulated in their reports. Um, I think, I feel this is compatible. Uh, uh, like you mentioned that you didn't feel as compatible with the general plan. I think it, it is compatible with the general plan in that it, it allows for, for preservation rather than, uh, evaporation of, of, of smaller, um, agricultural areas. You know, if it's a, if it's a five acre A1 or like a, you know, a much smaller thing, they'll, that, that's somewhere else in the city, they'll be very limited in the size, uh, of a meeting hall they can have. Um, they'll be limited by the building square footage. They'll be limited by parking. Um, you know, the Finches in this scenario would have a little bit more room to play with because they have a, about a 10 acre farm. Um, you know, it gives them, it gives them five acres to play with on, on doing this, uh, barn and parking lot. Um, yeah, I, I, I kind of fall on the side where the plan, the general plan would, would favor this and is like some of the, the neighbors have said, um, where it preserves agricultural use in, in a residential area.
This is Mr. Finch's application and he has the right to ask for an up or down vote if that's what he would like to do. Um, the last point that was just made, uh, makes me wonder if it would make sense to have a minimum acreage on this use. Uh, 10 acres, for example, because one of the things that definitely makes staff nervous is somebody with a pretty small agricultural piece that's very close to a lot more housing than this is. Um, and then those neighbors feeling very chipped by this thing getting approved in their neighborhood. Um, if you're gonna move forward in this.
Well, let's have, uh, Mr. Pepperoni finish his statement. Um, I'll, I'll let, I'll, we'll let him finish his statement.
If you're gonna send us forward as a conditional use, there's also the criteria that you've already looked at. Mr. Knutson raised one issue about the agricultural theme, the building being an agricultural theme. I would suggest that you add to that, that sentence, that the only um, metal cladding material that could be used would be on the roof. So, because under those criteria, you just got, you guys just looked at, somebody could put up a Quonset hut. And it would meet those criteria. So if you're gonna move forward in this, I'd like at least that additional architectural standard. The only metal that's loud is on the roof, which is consistent with the photographs that were shown. It's nothing different from what you were showing. Uh, thirdly, you need to make a decision on the security guard issue. You've been presented with two alternatives. You need to just wade through that.
Um, and I, I would suggest maybe, uh, I'm interested in staff feedback with a design review committee. Was that something we would want? Um, uh, uh, an evaluation from them to determine whether it's, uh, agricultural in character?
That only is really useful is if you add more criteria for what is agricultural in character. Cause it's those things that the committee then has to look at to see whether or not this meets that. The, the DRC only has real usefulness. If they've got criteria, they can use as a yardstick to measure the application.
And, and, and specifically you're referring to building material that, that the roof is only metal.
Right.
Okay. For new, for new buildings, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
So certainly Mr. Finch should get a chance to respond because this is all new stuff that he didn't get to address. So to be fair, he should be able to.
I, I will give him some time. I do want to bring up the security thing. I, I propose a lower threshold, um, maybe 75 people. Where, uh, you know, one security guard per 75. I don't, I'm just throwing it out there because I don't really have a basis for making a recommendation. Uh, and that any one of, any single one of those, uh, live music, alcohol, past 10 PM would, would be the trigger. Yeah, so if there's 76, you'd need two. Or wait, no, no, if there's 150, you need two, yeah. Anyways, anyone, any other comments by commissioners?
Excuse me, I, I thought as an alternative to a fixed number, maybe a percentage of capacity. That way it applies, you know, no matter what. I don't know, maybe that's too much if it's a small capacity. I don't know, just a thought.
Okay, and then, uh, also, uh, Director Pepperoni ma- mentioned the, a minimum acreage.
I was thinking the same thing.
Something we wanna, that would make us feel more comfortable. If so, does anyone want to uh, proffer a, a recommendation for minimum acreage? I'd love to hear from you, Mr. Knutson.
Well, I went to a, it was up on the Utah Idaho border. I'm sure it would be out in the county. Uh, it was a beautiful place. It had a beautiful home and a barn right behind it. And it had lots of parking. It had basketball. It had nets for volleyball, all of the stuff that would have. And I asked him, I said, where is this is actually a working farm? Oh yes, this is a working farm. And I says, well then where are the tractors? Where are the horses? Where are the animals? And she pointed down there and she says, they're a half a mile down that way. And I, and I get to thinking about that and I thought, that's the problem here. Uh, Mr. Finch would like to keep the horses and the smell and the flies that they attract in the summer. Uh, and they're too close. They're just too close. They're just not far enough away. Uh, yeah, it gives him two incomes if he can do this. Plus keep the horses, it provides two incomes rather than just one. I think if we were gonna say a size, I'd get in trouble if I say, but I think it would have to be bigger than, than 10 acres. Uh, so anyway, that's what I had to say. I guess I'm a traditional farmer. I, I, I don't, I think this is business. This isn't farming.
Uh, if, if no other commissioners have any comment, I, I do want to just give, I'm gonna limit you to two minutes to respond to what we've brought up.
So the 10, the acreage, um, being reduced or a limited number of acres. We have 10 acres right now with two homes on those acres. One of the homes will be sold to help fund the business, which would put us under 10 acres. So that would kill this project if we went under the 10 acres. We'll be like nine, nine and a half, something like that. So I would suggest that somebody, we, there's a place over in Spanish Fork that, a venue just like this has 80 parking spots, stalls. It's on exactly one acre. Um, so if a, if a farm, for example, was five acres, they could build a nice venue on 20% of their, their space and do it really nice. So I would suggest that, uh, a, a, a place can be nice. As far as the smelling things and animals being close, that's the whole point. That's the whole point. And as far as this not being a traditional farm, I've made every cent in my life from being a farmer. I've done pumpkins, two million pounds of pumpkins a year. And that quit and dried up, I did vegetables. I've done horse boarding. I've done hay. I've done everything. I've even done cattle and I hated it. So the market dictates what you do. So I'm a traditionalist too. I've never had a, a, a second job or anything like that to help fund my farm. My farms managed, I've managed the farm and made a living off of it. And I think that this would be a great service to the community. I don't, don't see the negatives. Um, I don't think that you're gonna have people rushing out to build, uh, these meeting halls either. You saw that green map. That green map is gonna be sold as fast as your sewer system gets up to date. And, and we know that that's gonna be developers. But who's, who's gonna put in a small thing like this, five acres or, or 10 acre place, who's gonna put a million dollars into it to invest in it? Other than somebody that really loves the place.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Is, is any commissioner prepared to move forward with a, a motion? Um, I, before I ask that, I, um, I do want to acknowledge if, if, uh, with this being the designated time period, if you want to move, make a motion, uh, Ms. Kendall.
Well, I, I would like to make a motion to postpone it and look into another option because I don't feel comfortable making a blanket change to the agricultural zone. Um, people also do get a tax benefit. And so if you have, the, the thing that always rests on my mind is you have to take everything to the maximal extent of the application. So it's not just the applicant sitting in front of you who is wonderful, has a great idea. It's all the other potential possibilities. So that's why I don't feel comfortable. I would love to see something carved out for the agricultural zone that maybe they rezone that parcel, they give up the tax benefit for that. But yet they still can, can have that because this becomes a commercial property, basically. This is making money in a business way, not in an agricultural way necessarily anymore. So I just think it needs to be thought through better. I'm not prepared to do an up-down vote on it. So if I have to up-down vote, I, I can't support it. So I, my would make a motion to, um, postpone this and allow the city to work with the applicant to see if we can create another zone.
I have a procedural question because I'm new. Um, we are voting on this language as is or, okay, just exactly as is with no.
Uh, you can, as part of your motion, include those conditions, uh, some of the conditions we discussed, such as, uh, one per 75 occupants. When any one of the, one of the following applies, alcohol on premises, events, uh, past 10 PM. And, uh, what was the other one? Live music and then also the, the building materials, minimum acreage. Or if you, you, you mentioned a percentage. Um, so as, as, as your motion, uh, include any of those provisions as part of your motion, if you.
One idea for this, uh, for this criteria, the structure is that we could say, we could say use of traditional materials. Basically say like the structure should predominantly use materials common to rustic agricultural buildings.
I'm fine with that. Um, but I do think we should take, uh, Director Pepperoni's recommendation that, that metal, the only metal allowed as a building material be the roof. Um, but go ahead, Mr. Ardmore. Appreciate the procedural, um, parliamentary procedure, Mr. Ardmore. Um, is there a second on, on Ms. Kendall's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Um, I, or, or, we'll, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Soto, um, go ahead.
Oh, yes, I, I, I don't know enough still.
Uh, nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
So that's, uh, Commissioner Kendall's motion does not pass. Um, the vote was for three. So does, does another commissioner want to put forward a, a motion?
I move to add the provision of minimum acreage. No, actually, sorry.
I kind of feel like we need to just work through this one a little bit.
Through that, yeah, first, yeah.
Before we make a motion. So minimum acreage.
Uh, yes, and, and we, we're putting a, a motion. We, we need to consider that 10 acres would eliminate him in his project. Uh, and, and I, I want, Miss, uh, Commissioner Kendall, can you say that with your microphone on?
Well, I'm sorry to be the devil's advocate on this, but you don't change city zoning for one person.
I agree.
Right? No matter how much we like some. No matter how much we like somebody, no matter how great their plan seems, you gotta think through and you don't change the whole zoning for one person's situation. Because there's gonna be tons others.
Right, but we were just putting ten out there, right, because that was their number.
So what I'm saying is then pick another number, then find what's reasonable, that you think through logically all the way to the conclusion.
You know, the floor that Mr. Applicant Finch put was one acre. I don't know if we would feel that that's too low or.
I think he was saying that part of the farm was an acre.
So it was like a five, like a five acre and then
Right.
twenty percent of it, one acre being the minimum.
I think no matter what, I would like a pers- the percentage of the property used to be lower for a venue and parking. Because if the purpose really is to preserve the agriculture, it needs to be like half, if you have two-acre property and half of it's that, you only have, that doesn't really make sense. So maybe the minimum would help that. But even so, with a larger property, I think there should be a smaller percentage, like maximum a third of the property around there.
One of my concerns with working through this right now is it, I'm hesitant to believe that we can in this session go through enough discussion to really figure out all the extents of what we would want in here and feel like we're comprehensive enough to send it up. I kinda feel like if this is going to happen, it needs to, it kinda needs to be a restart and we need to have staff on board with what this would look like. And I don't know what the what the mechanism is for that. I don't know that it's continuing this. It might be, you know, maybe it's something that we cover in a study session, maybe it's something that they do on their own and then we come back around. I know that it's not fast, but but the ability to get, if we want this, and I think there's a pathway to do it, I don't feel like we can do that in this session right now. Yeah, I wanna look at, and then inform some of their, what they do on this, but I I think it's a good point. It kinda just feels like anything we'd be doing, we'd just be kinda pulling it up out of our butts. And I'm not sure that's the best approach.
Okay, um, I I have a question as as part of procedure. I haven't noticed, like traditionally, I I've noticed the the presiding chair doesn't often make motions. It's usually been another commission member, but is is the chair allowed to put forward a motion?
Or vice versa.
I don't think there's anything in your bylaws that prohibit that. You remember the air? I don't think there's anything in the bylaws. You guys guys read that pretty recently, but I can't, usually, yes, the chair's a facilitator, not leading the charge. But I don't think there's anything in your roles that prohibits you from making a motion.
Can I ask you a question before you go? So if we if we do discuss this further or it gets extended where you're in more conversations, how, what is our role in that as far as some of these particular details that we wanna iron out? Is it something that we talked to you about in the planning meeting or how does that work?
It depends on how you would like to proceed. I think it is a good point that to try to wade through these in the middle of a public hearing is risky. Because it would be good to have some analysis on what does a third mean and how does that translate to different precise parcels? So we can either we'll take the direction you've given us. We can bring this back to you in a work session. We can bring this back to you in another public hearing where we've tried to work through the through these things. As staff's been talking about this, David Day had an intriguing suggestion and that was instead of having a whole new zone, agricultural zone, what about an overlay zone that could be applied to any of the agricultural zones that would permit this, but in going through that zone change process, because it would be a zone change process, the applicant would have to show us plans for the property and building elevations and things like that that would show us that this is real and we would really have a better understanding of what we're getting. So that's an alternative also that would still be out there. So while Mr. Finch has the right to ask for an up or down vote, you don't have to grant that. You you're the planning commission. If you wanna continue, you can. If you wanna do the up or down vote, you can.
Well, my concern was there was a disagreement on the parking issue. Was it parking or security? And so that wasn't ironed out. It was like Plan A, Plan B. So those are the kind of things where, how do those get resolved? With your help, with your guidance, how does, you know, because we're tasked with picking, you know, some of these suggestions that he brought to us.
My impression of what the planning commission discussion has been is that you're fairly comfortable with Mr. Finch's proposal for that particular criteria. Right.
That's what I was still, I was feeling comfortable with that, but I, I mean, there's only a few things. We don't, I don't know if it's our job to like, you know, we've got the roof, we've got this, you know, it's, I don't know if that's our job. Maybe it is.
When you're coming up with conditions, it is. I mean, yeah, so.
The conditions could go on and on forever. I mean, we could, so.
Right, that that is the purpose of this.
Okay, so that's what I wanted.
I do wanna clarify that this, whether we recommend approval or deny a recommendation of approval, it's it's going before the city council. And they could take our opinions under advisement.
But but it is a big deal. This, the council does take our opinions to heart, so. Because they know we've been thinking about this and working through it and they appreciate that, so.
The, you you, just to clarify your last comment, if if we were to continue, it's not scheduled on their agenda currently, right? So if we were to continue, just push back, or you're saying they're going, it's already on their agenda and regardless, we continue or not, they'll hear it? Would it, I I'm just, I'm just.
Would it come before the city council?
Your agenda is typically saying this hearing is gonna be tonight for planning commission and it's gonna be on the city council for this future date. In this case, I think it's August first. But anytime you continue an item, it automatically bums.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanna make sure. I I misunderstood your comment.
No, I pre- I, thanks for the clarification. I, sometimes I wanna have like a straw vote or something. I don't know if we've really done that in the past, but Mr. Finch, you could tell that it's a little bit of divided opinion on on the commission. I you're, I I'm just gonna ask a yes-no question. Are you, you still prefer to have a a yes-no vote?
I do not feel comfortable that the staff will actually work with us to try to solve these problems. We're getting further here. I know it might not be the forum, but we're getting further here and I don't feel like, like you said, I don't think there we're that far away. We've agreed on almost everything. I don't see that there's any reason to postpone this for another two weeks where we'll spin our wheels again and come to this meeting again at the same conditions that we are now. I think we pass it on to the next group and they can start from ground zero again with your the work that you've done and the staff has done with their recommendation.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. And you guys can, we'll vote on it, right? Or or maybe it gets a second, maybe it doesn't. I move to recommend approval of the proposed tax amendments submitted in item one, Barry Finch requests ordinance tax amendments to section fourteen point zero eight two zero permitted uses in the A-one zone. And fourteen point zero nine zero two zero permitted uses in the R A zone, subject, subject to the revisions of the staff. We're, okay, we're ignoring that fourteen zero nine two zero. To add meeting halls for rent as a new conditional use in the A-one agricultural and in the A-one agricultural zones, as well as new conditions in sections in section fourteen point three four two five zero with the following conditions. The proposed language for twelve A one, I'm sorry, twelve A two musical instruments, that there's a reference to section nine point zero six in the noise ordinance for Provo City. Number three, that a minimum of one security personnel for seventy-five occupants shall be on site to manage entrance to vehicles and parking lot during any event. I'm sorry, not during an event, when the following conditions are, or the following uses are are occurring. One, when there's alcohol on the premises, when an event goes past ten P M, subject to whatever business licensing or ordinance relative, relevant ordinances are, and also life music. Subsection for the design of the meeting hall building shall be characteristic of an agricultural use and the only metal allowed as a building material be a metal roof. Condition number four, five, that the meeting hall and associated parking shall occupy more than forty-nine percent of the property. And I think that's all the conditions I have at this point. Is there? Oh, and a minimum acreage of five acres. Is there any seconds on the motion?
So do you wanna have discussion first?
There is discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I I think that the security guard, it is on, the security guard should be a condition in itself, the number of people. If you're gonna make the security guard a condition, then it's not just if there's alcohol or music, that seventy-five people warrant a security guard. I think the number of people warrants a security guard. Does that make sense?
I just, just letting you remind you, we're we're discussing amongst ourselves. So just a number like, like it was mentioned before, do we have a threshold just for the number? Does it, does it matter if there's any, who the the character age?
You could say adults.
I'm.
That's a large gathering, seventy-five adults.
It is, yeah, I agree.
I'm, I kinda disagree. Like I, if there's a school group from Amelia Earhart that wants to walk across the street, I, you know, a fifth grade class, that a security guard be required. If there's three grades, three classes, and it's sixty or seventy-five people, I I think that's nuts to have a security guard required. Okay, just so, I'm not sure if your mics are on, but there, the other commissioners are mentioning seventy-five adults. Okay, I'm I'm happy to include that as a condition that we could vote on.
The other thing is Barbie, didn't you say you were thinking it's smaller percentage than forty-nine percent?
I think, yeah, if the acreage is five, I would definitely say is two and a half enough to have an actual.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
It it'd be like a very, you know, whatever two and a half acres can grow or or house for animals. I don't know what that is. I do wanna know, the the agricultural commission, they they had their letter and they were, they were split, right? So this is not an easily discernible proposal. Commissioner DeSoto, just to reiterate, what was, did you have a percentage there?
Oh, uh, I I'm really not sure. I think this goes to the point that I feel this, I need time to understand what that means, being not a person who grew up on farm. I did not, so.
Okay. So right now, we just have the, as an amendment to the motion, seventy-five adults. Any other amendments or discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, we'll we'll take a vote. Commissioner DeSoto, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
We'll go ahead and take a vote now, Commissioner DeSoto.
No, under current condition.
Commissioner Whitlock.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Newton.
Nay.
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 Okay, I vote aye. The motion fails four to three. Thank you for your time, Mr. Finch. This will go forward to the city council and they'll consider our deliberations and discussion and and wish you luck. Thanks. I'm moved to take a short five-minute break. I I need just a bathroom. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. So five-minute break. So five-minute break. Y'all ready to start back up? I think the five minutes has passed. We're starting all, all planning commission members have returned. Staff ready to present. With that, I'll read into the yeah, Hannah's here. With that, I'll read into the item number two, development services request the adoption of the Provo Conservation and Resiliency Plan to support the twenty-twenty-one general plan update. Citywide application, Hannah Salz presenting.
Thank you. First of all, before we get started, I just want to thank the technical working group, our citizen sustainability committee, led by Dawn there. We've also worked with a number of regional experts with the state and local water conservancy districts, parks, public works, fire, our energy department have all been very engaged in making sure that this document reflects their vision and is a realistic, actionable document, but also one that does stretch us and encourage us to grow. I'm excited for you all to see the graphics now, since we had to skip that before. As mentioned before, but I'll just run through it briefly for the record. This conservation and resiliency plan branched off general plan early on. We felt like we needed a little bit more room to discuss these items with more nuance. We had the initial draft from the consultants that was shared about a year and a half ago. We've spent the last year or so revising it, reworking it with the departments, making sure that it wasn't just a, a general vision, but it was really tailored to Provo's strengths and weaknesses. There are eight elements addressed in the plan that the plan is kind of built around. If you want definitions of what exactly we mean by each of these, they're found on page sixteen of the document. We narrowed down these eight based on what other cities, other benchmark cities we used had in their plans, what our departments had prioritized, and also what our citizens thought was most important. In the plan, each of these elements has a key performance indicator. That's just a single metric, so we can track process over, or track progress over the years. A two thousand nineteen baseline for that key performance indicator and twenty thirty and twenty fifty targets. We use twenty nineteen, even though it's a little outdated, simply to avoid the irregular data of the pandemic during twenty twenty twenty-one. And as we were revising, twenty twenty-two data wasn't available yet. But these are the targets recommended by the plan. I spent a lot of time going through them for the planning commissioners in the study session. I won't go through them all again here. If anyone is interested, they're welcome to check the recordings or contact me. Just to note that these are non-binding targets. This is a recommendation of policy and of goals to reach these targets. There also are no state requirements we have to meet with any of the content of this plan. It's not required at all by the state. It's purely in-house. We have full creative control. There are some where you'll notice, for example, urban nature, the green one has ND for baselines and targets. That's not determined. We don't know what it is, but it was agreed by council and planning commission and staff that this was an important metric. We're working to get more info on it. There are others like waste diversion with the contamination rate that could go up or down a small amount as we complete the Provo transfer station. Currently, all of our waste is sent to a communal transfer station that's shared by a few other communities. So this is an aggregate total, but Provo's probably around that ballpark. We will keep refining this key pay, or key performance indicator as we complete our transfer station, we get more information. So this is a first step, but this plan's been held up for a long time. We don't want to make it wait for a few more pieces of data. I'm planning on coming back and amending the plan as we get more. This won't be your, the last time you'll see this plan, I hope. I have slides here. I'm not going to go through them all that, but they have the categories for the goals for each of the category or each of the eight elements. If at any point the planning commissioners would like to reference them during the discussion, we also have the full document pulled up on screen, ready to go. If you'd like to reference anything, just let us know the page number. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Are any questions for the solve? You're free to go. Standby, standby. With that, this is a citywide application. There's no, there's no district or neighborhood that applies. With that, I'm just gonna open up straight to public comment. If, if no, if commission, if any of the commissioners don't have any other questions. Okay, let's go ahead with public comment. Please state your name and where you live, and you'll have two minutes, and there'll be a, a sound that comes up when your time's about to end. Go ahead.
My name's Don Jarvis. I live in the Wausatch neighborhood and Tree Streets. And I've been the city's environmental advisor, the sustainability advisor for eleven years or more than that, since two thousand and eleven. And I have worked with Hannah and with others to help craft this and we carefully edited every single word of the document. So I'm very much in favor of it, and it's a great step forward in making Provo a better place, ensure that, that Provo will be a better place. And it gives sort of a direction, whereas before it was sort of things that, that the planning commission thought up or the sustainability committee, which I, I've chaired for the eleven years. We would think of things and, you know, oh, thanks for sharing. Now we have, this is, this is much more of a city consensus as to what we should be doing. It's not, it's not, not a hard and fast rule, but it's a sense of where, where we ought to be headed.
Appreciate your comment, Mr. Jarvis. Thank you. Is there any members from the public that would like to be heard? Any other comments? Okay, seeing that, we'll close public comment and move on to commissioner discussion.
It was nice that we had a good introduction to this and work session, got to ask questions, and so I feel comfortable with this.
Likewise.
Would anyone like to move forward with the motion?
I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of development services requests for the adoption of the Provo Conservation Resiliency Plan to support the twenty-twenty-one general plan update for citywide application.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we'll, we'll vote on that. Commissioner De Soto.
Yes.
Aye.
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 I vote aye. That's a unanimous vote, seven in favors, none opposed. Let's move on to item number three. Development service requests an ordinance text amendment to chapter fourteen point three three A. Critical hillside overlays zone. Director Pepperoni.
As you're aware, the staff has previously initiated an ordinance text amendment to look at the open space subdivision ordinance and to look at the performance development ordinance to see if we still really need both of those things. And kind of going through that analysis and comparing those two, we also looked at the critical hillside overlay zone because that has some of the same types of regulations and overlaps with the open space subdivision ordinance. In doing that review, we recognized the correction that we would like to make to this zone. We weren't prepared to bring that to you yet. We wanted to introduce this as pending legislation that will come to you in a very, in a meeting very soon, but that's all this is doing tonight is initiating that pending legislation. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, so there's no vote on this item?
Oh, no, there's no vote on this.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. There's no, is there any? Is there any public comment? I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and open this up for commissioner discussion. I want to say I do like the, the clustering thing that, that it does allow to preserve the most unique elements of the landscape, whether it's hills or riparian things, trees, that I like the flexibility that provides. As well as the illustrations of that and the, and the proposed overlays on a text amendment. All right, is there any other commissioner discussion on that item?
I just have a question as a newbie. What is an overlay zone? What does that mean?
So overlay zones are used in a lot of different ways. For example, they're commonly used for offering different housing types like accessory dwelling units being allowed in certain areas will be offered as an overlay zone. What it basically means is you have your base zoning. In this case, we were talking about agricultural zones. An overlay zone would have special allowances for certain things that could be used in the, in those agricultural zones. So in this case, we would, what we were talking about is an overlay zone that would allow for event centers like this. And we would have some provisions that guide that, like the conditions of approval that you looked at. But the value in that process is overlay zones are still a rezoning on the property. So they'd have to apply for zone change. Now, when you apply for zone change in Provo City, you have to give us a concept plan, the site plan. So you have to actually draw the parking spaces and the venue footprint and how the property is going to be parked and those things. You have to give us a concept plan of your elevations and those types of things. And then those documents, if the zoning is approved, those documents are put into a development agreement. So the city can say, okay, you showed us this, now you have to build this. Or you have to go back to the city council and renegotiate your development agreement. So it just gives us the ability to have the developer put their cards on the table and show us what they're really going to do. And it gives the city the opportunity to have a binding agreement that says, you can't do a bait and switch on us here. You showed us these pictures, now that's what you have to build.
Any other comments by commissioners? All right, there's no vote on that, so we will go ahead and move on to item number four. The election of a new chair and vice chair. Feel free to I guess this is a commissioner's only thing unless any public wants to make any opposition, but I see only city staff, which are also free to object.
Is there a limit to terms? Like, can, can we vote Lisa to continue as the chair? She's not here, isn't that how it goes?
Usually it is, yes, and she's done a great job. But it actually specifically says in your rules that the chair can't succeed himself or herself as the chair for a second term. So I would love that Lisa, she's, like I said, done a great job, but the rules don't permit it.
There's also no shame in nominating yourself if anyone feels inclined. Commissioner Newton is nominated. Daniel Gonzalez.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Alene. We'll have a vote on this. I'm happy to close my eyes or ears. Go ahead with Commissioner De Soto.
Aye.
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 I, I. Maybe it'd be funny if I said no, just to throw the city council. The motion passes unanimously. Although
I nominate Jeff Whitlock for co-chair.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's take a vote on that. Commissioner De Soto?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion passes. Commissioner Jeff Whitlock was ambushed with a vice. Thank you for all of your service and all of your time, and especially for planning staff. We couldn't do this without you, and we rely heavily on your expertise, and you guys always deliver. We really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thanks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. We adjourn. Thanks.